Hi, welcome to our channel of Igno audiobooks, Indira Gandhi National Open University, School of Continuing Education, S O C E, Certificate Programs, Certificate Program in Rural Development, C R D, Revised M R D, to zero three Rural Development Planning and Management, Block One Rural Development Planning, Unit Three National Planning Commissions, Yojana Ayog and Niti Ayog, Three Point Zero aims and objectives. After reading this unit, you will be able to times define planning, times get an outline of the history of. Planning in India, times understand the formation and functions of the Planning Commission and the National Development Council. Times recognize the need for revamping planning in India and formation of. Niti Ayog and times contextualize the ideological shift in India's socio-economic planning. Three point one introduction, the first section, the concept of planning, section three point two will introduce the idea of planning. It will spark the students imagination regarding the need for planning. The examples given in this section will help the students to visualize the concept of planning and its usefulness. The next section, History of Planning in India, section three point three will introduce students to the various efforts made before and after independence regarding India's socio-economic planning. The following section, Types of Economy, section three point four will give a brief introduction to the major types of economies around the world and locate ideological choices of planning in India. Next section on Planning Commission in India, section three point five will describe the formation, objectives and functions of Yojana Ayog and National Development Council. It will also discuss the shortcomings of the Yojana Ayog and the conditions that led to creating a new commission, Niti Ayog. The section on Niti Ayog, section three point six will discuss the formation, objectives and functions of the Niti Ayog along with its prevailing criticism. The conclusion is the last section of this lesson, section three point seven, three point to the concept of planning. Cambridge English Dictionary defines planning as a set of decisions about how to do something in the future. Now you might be curious as to why. Plans are essential. What is the use of planning something beforehand? You might not realize but planning is an important part of human character. Animals act in an impulsive way but human beings think about the causes and consequences of their action. In doing so, they need planning. Students plan their careers and choose different subjects accordingly. Engineers plan out well before constructing the house. Players plan out strategies regarding the gain before going out to the field. Entrepreneurs make proper plan before establishing an enterprise and so on. The benefits of pre-thinking is that it helps in better management and utilization of time and resources. It also helps us in reducing the wastage of resources. To understand planning more explicitly, let us go through an example. Imagine that you are made the leader of a group from your college who wants to visit Tavang, a tourist place in Arunachal Pradesh for excursion. Sixty percent of the students in the group come from low income families, thirty percent from lower middle class families and only ten percent are from upper middle class families. It is clear that all the students do not have equal resources at their disposal. While some can afford going by flight, others can only afford traveling by the train. While some can hire a private cab, others may not be able to afford it. As a team leader, it is your responsibility to devise a travel plan that is accessible for all. You have to decide how to travel, where to stay and the sites you all want to visit. In order to take such decision which will be acceptable to all, you have to plan out the whole trip beforehand. So, you apply for an Indian Railways fare concession available for the student to save some money. Next, for traveling from the railway station to Tavang, you contact your old friend Dorji, a native of Tavang and ask to get a concession from his father's travel agency in booking cab. He may also assist you in choosing an affordable homestay in Tavang. After getting a concession from the Indian Railway and support from your friend, you can manage the trip more efficiently in terms of time and money. At the beginning of the trip, the poor students could not give money to book a private cab. The students from upper middle class families did not want to board a public bus. All of them wanted to stay in suitable accommodation. They all wanted to visit all the important sites in Tavang. You as a team leader soon realized that the resource for your trip was limited. Therefore, to meet all the needs and demands of the group, you start finding the best possible way to undertake the trip. As an effort, you requested Indian Railways for concession. You contacted your friend Dorji seeking his help in this whole process. What you did is planning. You planned your trip beforehand and tried to find the best possible ways to utilize the limited resources available. When we talk about planning in India, we mainly talk about socio-economic planning. When the British left India in nineteen forty-seven, the Indian economy was in shambles. The biggest challenge for our leaders was to take the country out of the miserable condition and work towards developing its economy. Economic development requires resources and we had very limited resources. Therefore, in order to utilize its limited resources in the most efficient way, India realized the need for planning. For this, two institutions were established, Yojana Ayog also known as Planning Commission and National Development Council. The main purpose of these two institutions was to design policies and development plans for the nation. Three point three History of Planning in India. Planning is the process which includes an intention or decision about what one is going to do. It helps in the efficient use of the available resources to achieve the desired goal. Economic planning in India has evolved historically with the engagement of scholars, industrialists and the people engaged in the freedom struggle. In this section, we will briefly examine a few such contributions to map out the history of planning in India. M. Visveswaraaya, eighteen sixty to nineteen sixty-two, an eminent engineer and statesman had proposed a framework for planning in India in his book Planned Economy. For India in nineteen thirty-four, he was influenced by Japan's industrial progress, Soviet, five-year plans and others. He suggested a ten-year plan for the economic development of India with the aim of doubling the income of the country. He gave importance to industrialization, emphasized the reduction of dependency on agriculture and increased employment in industries. He tried to organize the Indian economy in a more capitalistic way. His book is considered the first attempt at economic planning in India. In nineteen forty-four, another effort was made by eight industrialists, namely Jadi Tata, Ardeshir Dalal Lala, Ghanashyam Das Birla, Kasturthai Lal Bhai, Shri Ram, Sar, Purshottam Das Thakurdas, Ardeshir Darab Shah Shroff and John Mathai, they proposed the Bombay Plan. Bombay Plan envisaged for fifteen years of planning. The basic idea of the Bombay Plan was that for the economic development of India, government intervention was important and the government should protect the indigenous industries. Bombay Plan tries to improve the standard of living of the masses of the population by increasing per capita income, mass education, etc. In nineteen forty-four, Shri Maan Narayan Agarwal proposed the Gandhian Plan in his book. It reflects the ideology of Gandhiji such as decentralization, development of agriculture, development of cottage industries, Panchaiti Raj, etc. Gandhian economy talks about the harmony of both nature and growth. It talks about decentralized labor-intensive production instead of big mechanized industries. Gandhiji also talked about self-reliance and the development of the Khadi Industries. M. N. Roy proposed the People's Plan in nineteen forty-four. He was a supporter of the Communist Party and instead of industrial planning, he gave priority to agriculture development, small-scale industries, meeting the basic need of the people, equitable distribution, etc. In his planning, we find the effort of socialistic organization of the economy with the background of above-mentioned ideas of planning. The Yojana Ayog was introduced in India in nineteen fifty. Yojana Ayog was an economic advisory body set up by an executive resolution of the Union Cabinet. It was established to design policies and developmental plans which included repairing the five-year plan acting as an advisory body to the union and the state governments. It played a crucial role in deciding the quantum and direction of India's development. It has helped us in boosting the growth in sectors such as agriculture, industries, technology, alleviation of poverty, etc. However, Yojana Ayog is not free from any criticism, with the passage of time its criticism only grew. As a result, it has been now replaced with the Niti National Institution for Transforming India Ayog. Three point four Types of Economy. Before we move on to discuss the Yojana Ayog and Niti Ayog, let us discuss the prevalent types of economies across the world. They are capitalist, socialist and mixed economy. The choice of the economy depends upon the ideological orientation and commitment of the leaders and historical experiences of the countries in managing their internal and external affairs. While most of the western countries such as the USA, England, France, Germany adopted a capitalist economy. The erstwhile USSR, China, Cuba followed the socialist economy. Capitalism as an ideology believed that the state should not control the economy. Economy is controlled by itself by the law of demand and supply. Capitalism says that if there is an open competition, only the best product will remain and because of competition, the price of the product will always remain reasonably low. Socialism, on the other hand, believes that the state should take a strong step in monitoring the economy and it should be an active player in the economy. The means of production should be controlled by the state itself. Instead of open competition, socialism supports cooperation. Mixed economy tries to make the balance between capitalism and socialism. Here, productive assets are owned by both private and public sector. India experimented with mixed economic model for its development after independence. Three point four point one India and mixed economy, both capitalism and socialism have their own drawbacks. Capitalism increases competitiveness. It talks about the open competition. However, when a market is open, only a few sections of society who are at advantageous positions are able to exploit the benefit. As a result, the poor become poorer and rich become richer. Besides, because of the competition in capitalism, there is thirst for huge production and when production goes beyond the limit, it ultimately leads to a crisis in the market which the world witness in the form of the economic slowdown. The Great Depression of nineteen twenty-nine and economic crisis of two thousand and eight can be cited as an example. Socialism, on the other hand, talks about cooperation. It is generally criticized as a slow and sluggish economy. There is an absence of competitiveness in the socialist economy which may lead to loss of zeal among people to do better. As the state determines everything, there are very little choices available for the consumers in socialist economy. India however did not adopt either capitalist economy or socialist economy, it went for the mixed economy. Mixed economy is one where the means of production and job creation was held by both private and public sector. There is both private and public layer in the Indian economy. The strategic sector of the Indian economy such as defense manufacturing, Indian railway, space, atomic energy, etc. was put under the direct control of the state. However, in the recent times, Indian Railways and Defense Manufacturing have witnessed the participation of private players as well. On the other hand, sectors such as education, health, communication were opened to the private sector also. Therefore, a mixed economy was supposed to be a fine balance of both capitalism and socialism. After independence, India followed a protectionist policy, it had a closed economy. The primary focus of the government was the development of the nation and for that it did not allow any outsider in the market for competition. It was only during the P V Narasimha Rao government under the guidance of then Finance Minister Dr. Manmohan Singh. India adopted L P G, which stands for liberalization, privatization and globalization in nineteen ninety-one. This led India to open its economy. If we see the history of Indian economy after independence, we see a rapid nationalization of many industries and bank which leads to the belief that Indian economy was then tilted more towards the socialistic economy. However, since nineteen ninety-one after the L P G Reformation, it is said that India is bending more towards the capitalist economy. Three point five Planning Commission in India, the Planning Commission was established in India in nineteen fifty for policy design and developmental plan for the growth and development of India. Planning Commission in India was also known as Yojana Ayog. The sole aim of the Planning Commission was to bring long-term developments in India. The execution of this goal of the Planning Commission was exercised through the five-year plans in India. Planning Commission was established by an executive resolution on the recommendation of the Advisory Planning Board constituted in nineteen forty-six under K dot C New Yogi with the motto of social and economic development. Yojana Ayog was neither a constitutional body nor a statutory body. It worked as an advisory body to the government. P T Jawaharlal Nehru was the first chairman of the Planning Commission. Objective of the Planning Commission, times to assist the material and human resources of the country. Times to plan for the balanced utilization of material resources of the country, times to set the priorities of planning, times to determine appropriate machinery for the success of planning, times time-to-time appraisal of the implemented plans, times to identify the factors that are responsible for the retard of planning composition of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission consisted of following members. The Prime Minister was the chairman of the Planning Commission. There was a deputy chairman who was the de facto executive head of the Planning Commission. Deputy Chairman was responsible for the formulation and the submission of the five-years plans. The deputy chairman was appointed by the Central Cabinet. He enjoyed the status of a cabinet minister. The Finance Minister and Planning Minister were the Planning Commission's ex-officio, members and a few other members appointed amongst the central ministers. Four to seven full-time expert members were also appointed who enjoyed Minister of State rank. A senior I S officer was appointed as a member secretary. The Planning Commission had a dual hierarchy in its internal organization. The administrative order was headed by the secretary of the Planning Commission who was assisted by joint secretaries, deputy secretaries, under secretaries and other administrative and clerical staff. The technical hierarchy was headed by the advisor. The advisor was assisted by chiefs, directors, joint directors and other technical staff. Apart from the Planning Commission, there was another institution established for complementing the developmental planning of India which was known as the National Development Council. Three point five point one National Development Council. One major reason behind the establishment of the National Development Council was to give representation to the states. It was established in the year nineteen fifty-two. The National Development Council composed of the Prime Minister as the Chairman. It includes other members such as Chief Ministers of all states, administrators of all union territories, all cabinet ministers, members of the Planning Commission, etc. The Member Secretary of Planning Commission also serves as the Secretary of National Development Council, the passing of the five-year plan involved both the Planning Commission and the National Development Council. First, the draft is prepared by the Planning Commission, then it is sent to the National Development Council. If National Development Council wants any modification in the draft, then it can send back the draft to Planning Commission again. Otherwise, it can approve it. If National Development Council wants any modification in the draft, then Planning Commission modifies it and sends it to the National Development Council again for approval. If National Development Council approves, then it is given to the cabinet and subsequently presented in the parliament. Once parliament approves it, the implementation of the five-years plan happens. Three point five point to criticism of Planning Commission and case for Niti Ayog. The Planning Commission served India for a long time. Then the question arises, what was the reason for the need to replace the Planning Commission with Niti Ayog? Planning Commission has served the country for more than six decades. In these six decades, Planning Commission garnered both praises as well as criticisms from different corners of the society. Some of the successful steps of the Planning Commission were as following during the. Era of the Planning Commission, we have seen an average increase of GDP, gross domestic product, especially after the L P G Reformation, our GDP growth rate became faster. The different five-years plans devised by the Planning Commission also led to growth in both agricultural and industrial sector. The Green Revolution of nineteen sixties which made India self-reliant in food crops was also the result of five-year planning. Along with the Green Revolution, White Revolution, Pink Revolution, etc., also became successful which helped in the upliftment of vast sections of Indian society. However, in spite of having so many merits, Planning Commission suffered from its own drawbacks. In the formation of the Planning Commission, as mentioned in section three point five, you might have noticed that there is no direct engagement of any state in the Planning Commission. States were not represented in the Planning Commission. Besides planning, the commission worked in a top-to-down approach. Plans were centrally drafted and implemented in the state. Here, states did not have any agency. Different states needed a different kind of a plan, but many a times the Planning Commission would draft a similar kind of plan for all the states. This led to discontentment among the states towards the Planning Commission. The regional outcome of the growth was also dissatisfactory during the time of the Planning Commission. There was a skewed GDP growth around various regions of India. While some regions prospered, others remained poor. The rural-urban gap in the process of development was also witnessed. While urban areas were developing at a faster rate, rural areas seemed to develop at a slower rate. The Planning Commission was criticized by Administrative Reforms Commission A R C. It observed under the constitution, the ministers, whether in the center or the states are in effect the ultimate executive authorities. Unfortunately, the Planning Commission has in some measures earned the reputation of being a parallel cabinet and sometimes a super cabinet. Dot P V Rajmandar, the chairman of the Fourth Finance Commission, highlighted the overlapping of functions and responsibilities between the erstwhile Planning Commission and Finance Commission in federal fiscal transfers. He criticized the Planning Commission for this outgrowth. T R Gardgill, the former deputy chairman of the Planning Commission, also criticized the role of the Planning Commission and concluded that it has failed in its task. He said, "The root of the failure lies in the process by which the Planning Commission essentially only an advisory body has come to mix itself with the actual process of the formation of public policies even in matters other than that of development." The misdirection has been helped largely by the membership of the Prime Minister and the Finance Minister in. The Planning Commission, which appears to have vested the Planning Commission and its decisions with an unnatural kind of prestige and importance. Dot, in the light of above-mentioned drawbacks, the Planning Commission or Yojana Ayog was replaced by the Niti Ayog. Three point six Niti Ayog. Niti Ayog was established on first January two thousand and fifteen. Niti Ayog stands for National Institution for Transforming India. Like the Yojana Ayog, Niti Ayog is also created by an executive resolution. Therefore, Niti Ayog is neither a constitutional nor a statutory body. Niti Ayog is a premier policy, think-tank of the government in designing strategic and long-term policies. It also gives relevant advice to the center and the states. Niti Ayog focuses on changing policymaking from the top-to-bottom approach to bottom-up approach by engaging the states. Under the erstwhile Planning Commission, the states occupied a conformist position, but now they are considered active partners. Objectives of Niti Ayog, a few objectives of Niti Ayog are as follow. Times to develop India by a shared vision of both the center and the state. Times to boost the cooperative federalism between center and state. Times to pay special attention to the vulnerable section of society. Times to focus on technological upgradation. Times to create knowledge innovation, etc. Times to monitor and evaluate the implementation of various programs. Composition of Niti Ayog. Niti Ayog consists of the following members. The Prime Minister is the chairperson of Niti Ayog. A Governing Council consists of all the chief ministers of the states and chief ministers of union territories, having legislature and lieutenant governor of union territories. A vice president is appointed by the Prime Minister who enjoys the cabinet Mr. Rank. There are some full-time members who enjoy the Minister of State rank. Part-time members comprised of a maximum of two, from various universities, research organizations, etc. There is a maximum of four ex-officio members from the Union Council of Minister nominated by the Prime Minister. The Prime Minister appoints a chief executive officer. There is also provision for secretariat as deemed necessary. Regional councils is formed in Niti Ayog to address the specific issues impacting more than one states. These are formed for a specific tenure. The Regional Council is convened by the Prime Minister and comprises of chief ministers of the state and lieutenant governor of the union territories of the region. The Regional Council is chaired by the chairperson of Niti Ayog or his nominee. Criticism of Niti Ayog, Niti Ayog has been subject to criticism on various grounds since the day of its inception. Many scholars opined that it is old wine in the new bottle. Both the Planning Commission and the Niti Ayog are doing a similar kind of work. There is no significant difference in the function of the Planning Commission and Niti Ayog. Niti Ayog is merely an advisory body, unlike the Planning Commission which had important say on the funding of various projects both at central and state level. Various projects both at central and state level. Because of this, Niti Ayog is called toothless tiger by few critics. Niti Ayog however provides direct representation to the states. But the state's indirect representation was already there through the National Development Council. Therefore, when it comes to the composition, there is little difference. According to some critics, the notion of a planned economy is gone now. At present, we do not have any central planning like the five-years planning. Which India followed for more than half a century. Currently, our country is faced with various challenges like the negative GDP growth, increasing unemployment. Poor health, sector etcetera, but there is no long-term planning to tackle these problems unlike before. Niti Ayog being an advisory body cannot take relevant steps needed to face the present challenges. Critics also say that giving states representation in policymaking also seems futile. As experiences show that, many chief ministers remain absent from Niti Ayog meetings. Besides, the number of experts in the various fields also seems to be reduced in Niti Ayog. In comparison to the Planning Commission which again is a big drawback. Three point seven summary, after about two hundred years of colonial exploitation. The Indian economy was in a crisis at the time of independence. Our model of economic growth and development was largely shaped in struggle for national freedom. The vision of our national leaders such as Mahatma Gandhi, Jawaharlal Nehru, Jay Prakash Narayan. Got the prominence in our planning priorities, the post-independence reconstruction of economy. There were differences of perspective among the leaders regarding which path of development should India follow in post-independence. For example, while Gandhian vision was related to the democratic decentralization i.e. Panchaiti Raj. Development of cottage industries. Agricultural development etcetera. Nehru's vision was more for a modern industrial country. However, all the leaders had a few major similarities in their vision. They all wanted a developed and a self-reliant India. They wanted to improve the quality of life of the common people. As the majority of Indians live in the villages, so for the development of the country, developing its villages was crucial. However, newly independent India had limited resources and our leaders wanted to utilize it. In the most efficient way to get the maximum benefit out of it. There were two options in front of them, i.e. either to follow the path of capitalism or to choose socialism. Our leaders realized that both the ideologies were not compatible with the Indian situation. There has been a cooperation-based economy in India from ancient times. If it was replaced by capitalism, then it would create a problem. Besides mere adaptation of capitalism would lead to the concentration of wealth at the hands of a few. But on the other hand, our leaders also visualized the rapid growth which cannot be met only by adopting socialism. Therefore, India opted for the mixed economy. To fulfill its dream, the first step that came to our leaders, mind was planning. USSR remained a successful case in front of them. To plan for the Indian economy or to plan for Indian growth and development, to be precise. Planning Commission and National Development Council were established. This Planning Commission has remained a driving force for the last six decades in drafting out the five-years plan. And paving the way for the development of India. But gradually many experts realized that it could not meet its envisaged aims and objectives. And a need for a new institution to take its place was felt. Likewise, in January two thousand and fifteen, Planning Commission was replaced by Niti Ayog. The main reason given for this is that the Planning Commission did not include a representation of the states. To make it more federal and decentralized, the Planning Commission was replaced by Niti Ayog. Thank you. Subscribe to our channel for more updates and we will see you with the next chapter.